It is 6:00 AM, Tuesday, December 6, 2022. I'm going to call the City Council Regular Meeting to order. Are we on over there, Jeff?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. So we are located at Granbury City Hall, 116 West Bridge Street, Granbury, Texas, 76048. For the invocation, I'd like to invite Pastor Dan Jones of Triple Cross Cowboy Church to come forward and offer, as he says, to lift us up.
Has informed me that former Mayor David Southern is not doing well, so as we pray, we'll lift him up as well. Pray with me, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and for all the blessings you've given us. Lord, I thank you that you've allowed us to live in a place like Granbury, Texas, and Hood County. Father, I lift up the proceedings of this meeting, that the business that's discussed here tonight would be pleasing to you, that the outcomes, that the solutions would be pleasing to you. I ask, Lord, for wisdom and counsel and peace for these folks that have volunteered and given their time to direct this city. So we pray that you'd bless them with wisdom from above. Lord, we also want to lift up David Southern. Lord, you made him. You know everything about him. You know what he's going through, what he's dealing with, and we just lift him up, that your hand would be on him and his family, and we pray that your will be done. Father, in everything, your will be done. We ask it in Jesus' name. Amen.
If you'll join me with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to declare the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. And we're going to go right to four, Proclamation and Presentation. We will have a certificate of election and administering the oath of office to duly-elected City of Granbury Mayor Jim Jarrett and councilperson place two, Eddie Rodriguez. And then after that, we will have a few minutes to talk about encouraging statements to recognize city staff and maybe even a little history at that point in time. So Eddie, you want to join me up front?
I'm going to use your Bible. Just wearing it, okay?
Well, I'll tell you. Yes.
Are we both swearing?
Yes, sir.
Okay. How do we all do that?
All right. Eddie?
We're both. Are we both swearing in at the same time?
Yep. Thanks, guys.
See how well we take direction?
Please stand back here and face this way so they can put their hand on the Bible. Thank you.
There you go.
We'll get out of everybody's way.
Get up here, Mark. Come on.
All right. Put that away.
Okay.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
Aye.
Jim Jarrett. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
Oh, faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
Duties of the office.
Of.
Mayor.
City Council Place Two.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
And the laws of this state.
And the laws of this state.
And the United States.
And the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you. 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 Do you have some words that you'd like to speak?
I don't know. I don't know. I like to thank, oh, thank you. Thank you for everybody in the audience. Thank you for everybody that came here this evening, and I just want to thank family, friends, for helping. There was a lot of people that helped with the campaign, and I am just so appreciative of those people and how they helped the campaign. And I just want to say really thank you. It's a heartfelt thank you. The biggest supporter for me was my wife, taking a lot of the brunt of it and the stress and the anxiety that I have going through a campaign, and then walking and knocking on doors. I appreciate it, babe. Thank you.
Thank you. I did a, I asked somebody, it wasn't me that did it, I asked someone to look up and say, how many mayors have been in Granbury in the last 151 years? Because that's when the first mayor, Mayor Thrash, was also sworn in. And in the last 151 years, we believe it's about 33 mayors, and I am exceptionally proud to be and pleased to be one of those mayors. And I could not be here without each of you. I could not be here without this group right here. I would have left in about 10 weeks if they hadn't trained me up quickly. And that I heard that one of the things about public office is you learn public office in public, and sometimes that's a little hard. But I appreciate it. I appreciate family that did support me, and they all did, so I'm not eliminating anyone. Certainly, I appreciate Faye stepping forward tonight, even in holding this Bible that I don't know exactly how old it is, but it is older than I. So I am here to serve. We will begin doing that right now. Thank you.
Our mayor went out of order a little bit, but we'll let him slide today. In the, excuse me, in the name and by the authority of the City of Granbury, Texas, this is to certify that a general election held on November 8, 2022, Jim Jarrett was duly-elected Mayor, Place One. In testimony whereof, I have heretofore signed my name and caused the seal of the City of Granbury, Texas, to be affixed the second day of December, 2022. Trish Reiner, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, your way.
Our mayor went out of order a little bit, but we'll let him slide today. In the, excuse me, in the name and by the authority of the City of Granbury, Texas, this is to certify that a general election held on November 8, 2022, Jim Jarrett was duly-elected Mayor, Place One. In testimony whereof, I have heretofore signed my name and caused the seal of the City of Granbury, Texas, to be affixed the second day of December, 2022. Trish Reiner, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, your way. In the name and by the authority of the City of Granbury, Texas, this is to certify that a general election held on November 8, 2022, Eddie Rodriguez was duly-elected councilperson, Place Two. In testimony whereof, I have heretofore signed my name and caused the seal of the City of Granbury, Texas, to be affixed the second day of December, 2022. Jim Jarrett, Mayor. Congratulations, Kaufman. Appreciate it. I'll give that back to you. city staff. Before I ask the group if that's, if they have anything, which generally we do, I'd like to point out that in the first, I think the first meeting of the most recent term, Ms. Trish Reiner put this on the agenda, and we have had it on the agenda, I think only one time did we miss it from having it on the agenda. We've had it on the agenda ever since, and I think it's a great, great tradition. I think our staff needs recognition each and every time that we are here and able to do it. And tonight, there may be another tradition starting. We've talked about a little bit of history. We talked about the history of this building. As of tomorrow, is 20th anniversary of the dedication of this building. 20th anniversary, and I think the carpet's still the same? Yeah, we're working on that. But this is where history lives, and I think that recognizing our staff and recognizing our history, spent a couple of minutes on those every couple of weeks, not a bad thing. We'll talk about it further, I'm sure. Mr. Kaufman?
If you could, could you play that slideshow of the old city hall that was in demolition and then restored back to our new building? Just a couple of pictures there I wanted you all to see. We found these in a former employee's database that worked here for decades, and she left us her files, so we were privileged to have these old pictures. That was before my time here. I know many of y'all lived here and saw that change. There's some key employees that were involved with the city back then, and there's our new building as it was getting close to being occupied, I guess. And I'm going to tell you all a little story. I drove by this building when it was under construction in about 2001, and I was with my dad. He lived in the Thorpe Springs area on the lake, and I said, what in the world are they building there? And he said, that's the new city hall. And I said, I need to be the city manager there someday. And so, you know, little did I know, the prophecy came to truth. So here's a picture of the celebration, and that's a commemorative keychain that we had back in those days. Anyway, congratulations to a well-invested piece of equipment for the city to use and citizens to enjoy. There's been all kinds of use for this room and other areas of the building, meetings, emergency operations. You know, the community uses this room for different functions, different training. It's really been a great asset to the community. And what a, listen, I just got to give a big applaud to the folks that made the decisions at the time to build such a fine facility for our community. This has been a beautiful building. It's a testimony to the excellence that our city provides to the community. And so anyway, I just want to thank those people. I don't know if they're watching this or they're in the room, but there was people that made big decisions back then and had a lot of vision, and so we want to thank them. And of course, David Southern was one of them. He was the mayor at the time, and his health is failing, so keep him in your prayers. While we're on the topic of appreciation to staff, I just want to give a shout out in appreciation to our City Secretary, Carla Walker, and Mickey Matlock, the Deputy City Secretary. I don't know if y'all know it or not, but there's a bunch of old historical city records at the Old Train Depot Museum. The Genealogical Society has those, and they've been working with us for about five years and sharing those records with us. And our City Secretary staff have been scanning those records into our database to where we have those records here. At one point, we didn't have those records, and from what I understand, they were at the courthouse at one point, and when they were remodeling the courthouse for that historical preservation, they almost got thrown away. And Karen Nance rescued them and took them to the Depot Museum, and they are on file down there. There's some really neat old records, but goes back to those old minutes and things from the 1900s, early 1900s, maybe even beyond that. I don't know how old they are. But Carla, thank you for doing that and leading that effort and getting that done, because that's some vital information that we like to have on hand here at the city. So that's all I've got.
Yeah, there's so many, there are so many people that work behind the scenes that make things happen and go well each and every day, and certainly those too, and many of the people out here are a part of that. Mr. Mayor? Yes, sir, Mr. Vale. Just one comment. I just want to recognize the beautiful job that Aaron McLean and the Parks Team, along with Rick Crownover and Kenneth Cozy with the Utility Department, really have just transformed this city. I think we've all had an opportunity to walk around downtown. I know I have from various events last weekend, the weekend before. And the city, it really is just absolutely beautiful. I mean, I'd call it the winter Norman Rockwell print, and it really is. It's just absolutely beautiful, and the team does a great job, obviously, with all the decorations in town. They start fairly early, but it's, they do a fantastic job, and we should thank them for all of their efforts. It's turned the city into just a beautiful place. So thank you. Yeah. I would encourage each of you to stop and just spend a few moments looking out toward the park from the balcony up here. It is absolutely a gorgeous piece of work back there, and we thank, you know, not just the Parks Group, talk about the electrical, it is a total city effort to make this happen back there. Other? Okay. All right, we have a busy agenda tonight. We'll move right along. Item five, we have public comments on agenda items for non-public hearing agenda items. Speakers have a time limit of three minutes allotted at this time for comments regarding agenda items that are not listed as a public hearing. Public hearing comments will be recognized when the public hearing is opened. I do have a couple of requests. I have Mr. Link Clifton come up and wanted to speak on 7.4. If you'll just repeat your name and your address, please, so we can make sure we get back to you. Yes?
My name's Lincoln Clifton. I basically just built a new house down here outside of Granbury, up on the Brazos River, been coming down to Granbury probably for the last four or five years, and I'm anxious and honored to be here and want to share with you a little bit of a proposal that we've got into the Airport Commission in the city. I'm in the convenience store fuel business. It's my main business. I've built and developed over 100 convenience stores. I own and operate kind of throughout Oklahoma, Kansas, Colorado, and Texas. Transportation business, we run about 250 trucks. Developed a lot of different properties, have a big real estate property portfolio with a team of managers and leasing agents that work kind of through our group. Flying in and out of Granbury, I fly private about three days a week for all the companies that we have, go all the way to Laredo, Texas, down to San Antonio, Salt Lake City. So I fly a lot. I do have also a hangar in Oklahoma City that we keep about 10 airplanes in, and so I'm familiar with hangars and leasing. We manage the hangar through our group, and we actually, it's real similar to what you all are doing here. We lease the ground from the city and we build the, put the hangar on it. We also have a fuel farm. We have our own fuel. On my fuel division, we haul quite a bit of the fuel out of Tyler, Texas, into Lovefield for Southwest Airlines. I'm very familiar with aviation and fuel and rules and regs and regulations. I have a partner here, so I started inquiring, watching the airport. We've looked at a lot of other property down around Granbury to build convenience stores. What, we just built the new one in Brock, Texas, the Eagles Nest with the Sonic. We own and operate that, developed that little 15 acres there. That's typically what we, what I've done in my career is we'll go find a 5-10 acre development and then build a convenience store shopping center. It's evolved into multiple different projects, but short version is, dealing with Pat, wanted to buy a hangar because I'm going to be domiciled out of here, and I'm going to be flying out of Granbury, Texas. This is our home. I'm trying to slow down and enjoy the lake. Haven't quite got there yet, but involved in spending time with Pat from one hangar to saw an opportunity in need, and I kind of know how it works and fly and lease hangars all over, seems like. I have another real estate partner that is a huge contractor in and around Fort Worth. He's in Burleson, Texas, called Jasco Construction. Have about 60 full-time employees for a construction company, mainly commercial. Well, really, they are commercial. They build all the Carvana's in 38 states across the country. He's actually built about a dozen or so hangars over at Spinks Airport in Burleson, also built in Meacham. So kind of involved into, the more we got kind of digging in and dealing with Pat, and he's, I've tried to help a little bit on the fuel, which we haven't conquered yet, but we're, I've got my team working on it. We've got a proposal into the city to go ahead and do 20 to 24 of the hangars, the bigger hangars. I think it's a great project and honored to be here tonight. I think you guys have a great city, and it's going to continue growing, so you all need to be planning ahead. I've set up here on City Council meetings, I was on a board of the City Council in Johnson County, up in Kansas City, did that for about five years. I was on the Economic Development Board also.
Mr. Clifton?
Yeah, my time's up.
Well, I hate to say that, but I, what I could tell is we need to be spending a lot of time together. So could we set something up? We do a very busy agenda tonight.
Yes, sir. I'd be honored, and just, you guys don't get paid for sitting up there. I've done that for about seven years, so everybody really needs to thank these guys because they work really hard.
We have, I don't have a phone number. If you would come and give.
Yes, sir.
Oh, you do? Okay, great. We're going to talk a lot more.
And I'd be honored to come meet you all anytime and kind of show you what our plans are, but I'll drop off some cars.
It's going to happen sooner than later. Thank you.
Yes, sir. We're willing and able, and I'm here every, every week. I live here now, so.
Great, welcome.
Thank you all.
You bet. Mr. Jackie Vaughn? Mr. Vaughn, I see you've signed up for 7.4, 7.5, and 7.6. Does that mean we have to give you nine minutes?
Could be. Could be, but they're all tied together, and it's great to follow comments like I just heard, which is positive comments about the airport. I am Jackie Vaughn, Chairman of Granbury Regional Airport Board. I have several of our members in the audience tonight as well. I'd like to once again just thank City Council, Mayor Jarrett, City Manager, our Aviation Director, Pat Stewart, for helping make the new runway at Granbury Airport a reality. It's going to be a great asset, and as y'all meet further tonight, I think you're just going to get more and more into just how great we can be. In the past five weeks or so, since we had a ribbon-cutting event, I've checked in with the airport, been out a few times, and it's amazing at the number of larger business jet aircraft that's come in and out, jet prop aircraft. People don't fly business jets into an airport just to make a landing. They come into, if there's been an increase in traffic of business jets coming in and out of the airport, it's normally for a reason. And most of the people that fly the business jets aren't the owners of the airplane. They are just the pilots flying them in for a purpose that the owners directed them for, or the owners onboard, one or the other. And I think they've probably been coming in just to check out the facilities that we have. As I stated during our ribbon-cutting event, we're not called the best little airport in Texas, you know, without earning that by reputation. And now that we have a larger airport, better approaches, approaches on each end, which we didn't have before, it's generating a lot of interest, and that's really great. I saw a business jet come in yesterday, and it's really neat to see those type aircraft come in. During our December board meeting, Mr. Stewart discussed the proposed Archer Court project, our new terminal building, and now an added need for additional infrastructure to meet the demands of greatly accelerated potential growth. I think we're going to see things develop much quicker than the three to five years than we thought. It may be now instead of three to five years with all of the traffic that's been coming in. Granbury Regional Airport voted, our board voted unanimously to support all three projects and encourage City Council to find ways to financially support this gem of an opportunity for the city of Granbury and Hood County in general. And those three projects are Archer Court, the terminal building, and then we're going to have to do some infrastructure and, you know, when and where and how that takes place is hopefully up to the council. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. And could we have the airport board stand, not for any other reason than to say thank you? Thank you very much. Yeah. Yeah, that's, that has been a tremendous effort over the last many years, and I think we are all proud and happy that we've got that phase done. Now it's time that we move forward. Let me move forward to the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are routine. Previously discussed items be approved with one motion. However, should a member of the City Council wish to discuss any item, said item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered under the deliberation agenda. Does any council member want to move anything off? I hear that no one does. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda? Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I second that.
Mr. Vale makes a motion. Mr. Wadley seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. It passes 6-0. Okay. For our deliberation agenda, and this will be a public hearing, and I will call for the, anyone that wants to speak in just a moment. Consider adopting ordinance number 22-62 approving the request of Gary General LLC, its general partner, to rezone a 9.98 acre tract being Lot 1, Block 1 of the Granbury ASC addition from interim holding to business commercial. The property is addressed to 1717 Peluxi Highway. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. This has been before you in a different form as we pulled through. This is the final phase. I'll turn it over to our Director of Community Development, Cara Wowie, to fill you in on the details and walk you through the hearing process. Thank you.
Sure. So I have this geared up as including the plat for the presentation. Right? Okay. So here we are with the site location map. The site is outlined in teal or blue on that aerial. The site is currently improved with a surgical center, and that's towards the upside of the site. The applicant is seeking to zone change for business purposes. Business commercial would allow the existing surgical center among other medical types and office types of uses. The remaining portion of the lot where it is undeveloped currently would be a separate lot for future development. So this slide shows the existing zoning. The business commercial zoning is on both the left and the right sides of the subject property. The other areas to the south and the north are currently undeveloped and unzoned at this time. That just shows the surrounding uses. The future land use plan for this area recommends retail office, and the business commercial is aligned with the future land use map, so the zoning is supportable. And that just discusses the general plan or the comprehensive plan. This is the plat that is requested, shows two lots being created with easements for fire protection and utilities. There were no waivers requested or variances requested. The next few slides just show some pictures of the existing property and how that's laid out from the street. There. Staff mailed out seven public notices to the surrounding property owners and also advertised to the Hood County News. We received one letter in support and no letters in opposition to the request. to the request. At, um, the Planning and Zoning Commission, they've recommended approval of the request to rezone by unanimous vote, as well as the plat by unanimous vote. And there were no variances requested and all DRC comments have been addressed. Staff is recommending approval. And this first slide shows for the zoning. Your options on your zoning request are to approve the request for change in zoning or to deny the request for change in zoning. And the next slide will show your, your plat options. Again, staff recommending approval of replat and may either approve the plat as presented or deny the plat. And usually you would like me to go back to the zoning slide for your recommendation. If you have any question, if you have to answer that.
Uh, clarify the recommendations. I saw the seven point two pop up there.
Yeah, that's the agenda item. I think maybe we, we should have deleted that, but it's okay.
Okay. So, we are actually approving, uh, the rezoning and the replating.
Mm-huh.
Okay. I'm gonna open the, uh, public hearing. Does anyone, uh, would like to speak at the public hearing? Sir?
Yes. My name is Lester Hill. I represent the sixteen Hood County positions that are investors in that property and we are asking for approval on these so that we can subdivide that property up. And once the moratorium is, is lifted, then we can develop the back six acres into additional medical offices.
Questions for Mr. Hill? Other questions here? I applaud you for getting ahead of that, uh, moratorium, doing the things that can be done and should be done now. Any other questions? I'm gonna close the public hearing then. It's a discussion here. Mr. Wadley, anyone? Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the ordinance number twenty-two dash six-two approving the request of Gary General LLC, its general partner to rezone a nine-point-nine acre tract being Lot One Block One of the Granbury ASC addition from interim holding to business commercial. The property is addressed as seventeen-seventeen Peluxi Highway and approving the request of Gary General LLC, its general partner to replat Lot One Block One of the Granbury ASC addition as Lot One R and One R One Block One of the Granbury ASC addition. This property is addressed as seventeen-seventeen Peluxi Highway. Do I hear a motion?
Mayor.
Mr. Rodriguez?
I make a motion to approve the request as stated.
Motion's made.
Second.
Mr. Corrigan seconds the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say nay. I hear six ayes and it is approved six and oh. Okay?
I think we should make another motion for the plat.
Mayor.
Mr. Rodriguez?
I also make a motion to approve the replat as presented.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Corrigan. I have a motion to approve the replat as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say nay. There are no nays. It is approved six and oh. All right. I had the sheet somewhere. Where's the sheet to break to executive session? Ah, here. I now declare that the Granbury City Council has convened into open session that all members of present city council go into closed session pursuant to provisions of Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in the following sections. Section five-five-one-oh-seven-one, consultation with attorney pending or contemplated litigation. Section five-five-one-oh-seven-two, deliberation regarding real property. And section five-five-one-point-oh-eight-seven, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. We will now be in, in executive session. Again, thank you all for, uh, being patient with us. We now, I now declare that the Granbury City Council reconvenes into open session. There was no action taken in the closed session and all council members are present. Okay. We'll move right along to, uh, item seven point four. Consider adopting ordinance number twenty-two-point-six-three amending the operating budget for the general utility and airport funds for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. Uh, based on the economic development discussions that we just had in the back room, uh, staff would be willing to make this recommendation to approve this ordinance as presented in your council packet.
Very good. Any questions? As presented in the packet. Do I hear a motion?
Mayor.
Mr. Rodriguez?
I make a motion that we approve as presented.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Corrigan. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion is approved six and oh. Moving to seven point five. Consider awarding Granbury Regional Airport dash Archer Court paving and utilities project to J Mills Contracting, Inc. in the amount of two million, seven hundred and fifty-four, six hundred and eighty-four dollars, plus a ten percent contingency of two hundred and seventy-five, seven fifty-four, for a total of three million, oh-thirty, one hundred and fifty-two dollars. And authorize city manager to execute contract on behalf of the city. Mr. Kaufman?
So, we've, uh, staff has put together a pretty nice, uh, agenda packet for you there. We did advertise this twice, uh, trying to receive bids. Uh, the second time around, we finally did receive a single bid. It is from J Mills Contracting. It was a little over four percent more than what our engineer predicted the price would be. Uh, we've reviewed the, the, the documents. We got a letter from our engineer recommending award of this bid and staff concurs with that recommendation. Be happy to answer any questions you may have. I believe the engineer is still here if you have any questions for him.
Counsel? Do we have questions? Any, any more discussion? Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Vale.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Wadley seconds. That is, uh, we are approving seven point five awarding the Granbury Regional Airport Archer Court paving and utility, utilities project. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear no nays. It is approved six and oh. Moving to seven point six. Consider awarding Granbury Regional Airport dash FBL Terminal Building Project to MSB Constructors, Constructors, Inc. in the amount of three million, six hundred thousand, plus a ten percent contingency of three hundred and sixty thousand, three million, nine hundred and sixty thousand total. And authorize city manager to execute contract on behalf of the city. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. As y'all will re, recall, we've had, uh, quite a struggle trying to get to this point. Uh, we, we hired a, you know, advertised and selected a construction manager at risk with the anticipation of being able to save money. We were, uh, uh, going along with that process and we saw the probable opinion of cost that they were gonna present as a gross, uh, product price. And we didn't like the number. It was three point seven million without any contingency. And, uh, we decided to terminate that C Mar agreement and, uh, put it out for bid as a bid design build, uh, based on the, the, uh, the best qualified builder for the city. So, uh, we did do that and we were able to get the bid at three point six million dollars, which is still quite a bit higher than we had hoped. But I guess we're beginning to see that the market prices are as such, uh, they're so much higher than they were three, four years ago. So, um, with that, we've put together a funding summary in your packet and staff recommends the award of this grant to, or this con, construction award for MSB Constructors Incorporated in the amount of three point six million dollars with a ten percent contingency for us to use if needed at three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Answer any questions if you have any? I've got Michael and Pat here. They can help you as well.
Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Rodriguez?
I just got a comment. I just want to commend the staff for taking the opportunity to really try to save the taxpayers' money and, and look at every one of these projects and, and look at different ways of trying to get the lowest bid possible, but still maintaining a high standard, uh, based on that. So, uh, sometimes it doesn't work, sometimes it does. But, you know, for you to go out there, cancel a contract because you think it's too high, and you've done that several times that I've seen, not only with this, but you've done it with other projects such as the, uh, the chemicals, uh, that you had to cancel those contracts. So, I just want to commend the staff on that, um, and say that you are looking after the taxpayers and pro, and, and trying to provide the best service for the best price. So, with that said, uh, Mayor, I make a motion that we approved as presented.
So, you, you're making a motion to consider approving, awarding Granbury Regional Airport FBL Terminal Building Project to MSB for three million, six million plus a ten percent contingency. That's the motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Vale. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear no nays. It is approved six and oh. We'll now move to seven point seven. Provide directions to staff after receiving the engineering opinion of probable construction cost at the thirty percent engineering design phase for Shanley Park Pedestrian Bridge. Mr. Kaufman?
Again, this is, uh, this one's hard to, to take as well. Um, we wanted to provide this on the agenda for y'all to give us some direction. As you recall, uh, the, uh, Granbury Beautification Council granted a seventy-five thousand dollar gift towards the city, towards this project. And at the time we were talking, we thought it was gonna run somewhere around a quarter of a million dollars, including the, uh, design and engineering. And so, as we, uh, engaged the engineering firm, we learned that that was quite a bit higher than we anticipated. Some of those things that we didn't really take into consideration are the, uh, the applications and the science that has to be provided to the Corps of Engineers, uh, also, uh, dealing with the B R A, and then the environmental aspect with the federal waters. And so, all those components go into the engineering, which makes it a, a pretty expensive package to do the design. We also looked at, uh, needing to shore up some of the, uh, the, the, the shore on the, on the channel that approaches to that bridge that's been washed out. Um, it's failed. I think failed because it was improperly constructed back thirty years ago or forty years ago when it was built. And, uh, and, you know, time, time takes its toll on things and, and the scour from the, the river flows going through there has caused it to fail. We've had it roped off for about four years because of safety issues. We talked about, um, at one point, removing the bridge, just making some out, uh, fencing off the, the, the area, making some better-looking concrete there and having some benches where people could just sit there and look out over the, the creek. Um, you know, but in the end, we got the seventy-five thousand dollar grant and, uh, we've engaged, uh, Tignal and Perkins to help us with the design and engineering. So, when they got to the point where they showed that, uh, the probable opinion of cost is seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I thought it was time to talk to y'all again to get direction. Um, I do have the engineer here and I've got Aaron McLean here, uh, that would be able to answer questions on this. They've been working closely with them. I've stayed to the back row of that and let them do their job. So, Aaron, you wanna add anything to what I've said?
I'll just add that, uh, Mr. Burke Culver with T N P is here and, uh, if, if there's any, uh, cost-saving strategies that, that could be taken, you know, he could, he could speak on that, um, whether it be narrowing the width of the bridge or shortening the amount of, uh, bulkheads installed. Um, other than that, it, it kinda, it is what it is. There is always option of using the beautification funds to enhance that area, like Chris was saying, with some overlooks and some handrails and benches and things of that sort. Um, the bridge will still need to come out, you know, and those failing walls removed.
And repaired.
And, and repaired at some point. Um, if we decide not to go with the new bridge, uh, T N P could probably still, uh, assist us in that. I'd be glad to try to answer any questions or Mr. Burke Culver.
I'm gonna cue you up to answer this question. I know the answer to because I've already asked you. So, uh, for, forgive me for making it obvious. Uh, do you have a recommendation of what you would like to see done there since we have those other two bridges within pretty, pretty close proximity?
Yeah.
Uh, we kind of talked about that after staff meeting this week. We've got a picture for the world to see of the failed bridge circled in red, uh, line. And then there's two other walking bridges within close proximity of that.
The bridge you see just to the north of the one that's failing, um, if you take the walking trail to the left or west, that's four hundred feet on pavement to get to the other bridge. Um, if you, on the east side or the right side of the, the channel, it's three, or two hundred and thirty-five feet of paved surface to access the, the bridge north there. So, we, we do have another bridge very close that, that goes to the same section of Shanley Park as the bridge that's currently failing. So, my opinion would probably be not to spend the funds to replace that bridge, but to remove it, um, store it and perhaps use it in another project like the disc golf course where we are looking, we'll be looking to do a perimeter trail around that disc golf course to add three-quarters of a mile to our hike and bike trail. There's some, uh, low water crossing there that's much smaller and, and very much seasonal, that we could perhaps use that bridge in the future at that location. And then just enhance this site with some handrails and some overlooks and some benches and things of that sort. That would be my personal opinion if someone was asked.
So, in order to do that, we would need to redirect the engineer to come up with a different scope of work and bring that back to us for consideration.
That's correct. They do have some pricing included for demolition and removal, but, you know, that number may change. They need, they need to address, address that, you know, separate from installation of a new structure.
Obviously, the prices that we're faced everywhere we look are inflated and it's pretty scary, so.
Mr. Ryan?
Mayor. Aaron, have you spoken with the Beautification Council about the funding that they gave us? Or, because this was under, I'm under the impression it's extremely specific to the Shanley Park Bridge.
I have not personally spoken with them, no ma'am.
So, I'm with you. I, seventy, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars is a ridiculous amount of money considering, you know, what we're trying to do here. Um, and maybe this is a, a question for our attorney up here, but can we table this and do some more research? Talk to the Beautification Council, find out if this is specifically for the bridge, if we can utilize the funding for something else as you're discussing. Maybe we need to table this for a while and come back with a different plan.
Well, that, that's what the agenda item is. It's just, just to provide some direction to staff. So, you would just tell Chris, "Hey, get all this together and bring it back to us later."
Thank you.
Engineering costs. We wanted to reserve those strictly for, uh, the bridge or that project.
I can tell you that my conversations with, uh, that group, uh, when we received these funds is, there were questions about it and I told them, you know, the approximate price, um, was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and they wanted to do the best they could for the, and gave us seventy-five thousand dollars towards that. Uh, they may be willing to give more, but, uh, I don't think that it's enough to make it where we wanna jump in for the other half a million, you know? Um, so, that's kind of, we can give them their money back. It's not a problem if that's what they wanna do. But they have been very supportive. If you're, you know, that fountain at that park was paid for by the Beautification Council. The La Row House across the street is theirs and they maintain it. And they've done literally tons of stuff for us and, uh, it wouldn't be a surprise to me if they were willing to leave that seventy-five thousand towards, towards the beautification of that demolished bridge area. But we would need to clear that with them, I believe. But I would like to just, you know, first off, I wanted to gather tonight if, if I was off of my gourd thinking that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars was too much. Uh, the bridge that we built, a moment in time bridge that we built seven years ago, which is substantially larger than this and much, uh, heavier duty, uh, was a million one and that was with a grant. And so, we may be able to pursue some grant funds that would help us with this bridge. We haven't really breached that yet. We're gonna talk about the, the trail program here in a minute and there may be some grant funds coming around that we can just stall this project. But I, I needed to bring this to your attention as quickly as possible because, uh, you know, I like to produce what we say we're gonna do. And we got to a point where we got a good number from our engineer. It needed to be shared with y'all publicly, so get some direction.
Mr. Wadley?
Yeah. Aaron, you mentioned maybe using the bridge in another project. So, the bridge itself is okay. It's just the pilings on either end that are a problem.
In, in twenty-eighteen, there was a, a review of, of the bridge and they said it appeared to be structurally sound. appeared to be structurally sound at that point. That was in twenty eighteen.
But it's been, but it's been closed because the pilings at either end are failing. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yes.
So if we remove the bridge, what would we do with where the failed pilings are? Like it, we've got to do, we can't, we got to clean it up or do something with it.
You'd still have to remove the, the failed pilings and then do some kind of retaining wall just in that area because the, the bank is taller, um, and, and steep in that area. So you'd probably still need to, to spend some funds, I would think, and do some retaining in that area.
But we don't know what that would be at this point, do we?
We, we do not.
That's what we need direction for.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Vale.
Aaron, uh, you know, just looking at the park and having walked through there quite a bit, um, you know, it, your opinion on if that bridge is not there, does that have any impact on the walkability and, and how the pedestrians would navigate their way through the park?
That bridge is really a shortcut, you know, to, to that section of the park. Um, you know, you can, you, you still get to the east side of the channel, uh, walking another four hundred foot to the north and then across the, the other bridge. I don't see that it would affect anything. It's just a cut through really. And I would, I would recommend either taking out all the sidewalks that lead to that failing bridge or leaving them and enhancing it with some handrails and, and, um, a, a bench or something there.
Yeah, I mean, I read back through all the studies. I mean, it's so comprehensive, you know, to even get to this point and you talk about the demolition of it and obviously all the footing of the bridges has just failed and, uh, I didn't realize they'd been closed that long for four years. So, um, yeah, and the cost is just crazy. I mean, you know, you hate, you hate not to be able to maintain a, you know, a, a bridge or any kind of, you know, anything else structurally that the city has, but, you know, we get to a point where, you know, the cost is just so exorbitant to do that. And I think there's some other creative ideas, um, you know, that could be an overlook area as, as you mentioned and not really impact the walkability of Shanley Park, you know, for, and obviously this time of year, it, it gets a lot of visitors with all the Christmas lights. So, um, I like that idea and I think Chris, or, uh, Trish brought up a good point. I'm really just checking with the beautification, knowing that, you know, they, they were under the impression that they were donating this money, uh, to this particular project. So I think circling back with them, I think is appropriate. Thank you.
So do we have some, uh, specific direction for, uh, staff? You know, checking back with, uh, with the beautification committee certainly is one. Do I rather, Mr. Corrigan?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I think just from listening to everyone, I think what, there's two, two main points that we'd like to, to get clarification on. One, what specifically was the, were the funds entailed for and can those be used in some other aspect of this project or in the park in general? And then two, what the cost may look like, not replacing the bridge, but just doing something there to either, as Aaron stated, completely take it all out and build a retaining wall or leave some sort of outlook, uh, post or whatever you want to call it, some bench or something. Um, I mean, going over the numbers, aside from the actual construction of the new bridge, I don't, I don't know that there's a whole lot there that can be cut if we decide to put some kind of bench or, or, you know, point, uh, in that area. So clarifying that and then, uh, bringing it all back so we can make a more, um, justified decision based on cost.
Do you need, uh, additional?
I'm good.
You're good?
I got good, clear direction. If y'all want to vote on it, you can, but I'm good.
I don't think, uh, we need a vote. Thank you. Thank you, Aaron. Appreciate that. You might as well, uh, not go anywhere. I think we're about to talk to you again. Seven point eight, consider adopting ordinance number twenty-two dash six-four approving the Granbury Active Transportation and Recreation Plan. Mr. Coughlin.
I'll just turn it over to Mr. McLean and, and our, our engineering firm that's worked on this Granbury Active Transportation Recreation Plan. Walk us through it, please, sir. I know they've got a presentation for us.
All right. Um, so, uh, multiple city departments, um, city council members, board members and local citizens have worked with half associates, uh, for several months now to bring before council the Granbury Active Transportation and Recreation Plan. During the public meeting, citizens had the opportunity to speak directly with half representatives and mark, mark up maps of the city, uh, with ideas of recommendations or improvements for extensions or new routes for sidewalks, shared use trails and bike routes. This plan will serve as a city's first comprehensive plan addressing mobility and recreational needs for the community through a network of active transportation infrastructure. Uh, the Active Transportation Recreation Plan was presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Parks Board on November fourteenth of twenty twenty-two and both recommended approval by council. I'd like to introduce some representatives from half. So I've got Kelsey McNeese and Brennan Kane. So they've got some staff that are out ill. So, um, Brennan's kind of winging it, but he's going to do a great job. All right.
Good evening, Mayor, uh, members of council, citizens, staff. Thank you very much. Uh, again, my name is Brennan Kane. I'm the director of planning at half associates and oversee our team, uh, back in Richardson. Uh, yes, your project manager, Kendall Howard, unfortunately, uh, has COVID, so I'm filling in for her this evening and then, uh, trying to save Kelsey's voice here this evening. So when we do get to the, the Q and A session this evening, uh, she'll be able to come up and answer any questions that, um, you all may have this evening. But we, we want to, again, appreciate the opportunity to be here and thank you for, uh, working with us on this plan as well. Um, do we have the presentation coming up? Perfect. Awesome. All right. Perfect. So we'll just do, kind of do, I'll, I'll try to keep this, uh, kind of quickly as possible here for everyone this evening, but just want to brief you, uh, provide you guys a brief overview of the project recap of what we, what we worked on starting earlier this year, uh, talk about some of the recommendations and prioritization and implementation strategies that we're looking at as part of this, uh, overall planning process. But just a little bit of the recap. Um, again, we sincerely thank you for continuing to work with us. We worked with, uh, the community and, and staff and, and leadership, uh, back in nineteen and twenty for your, uh, Parks Recreation Open Space Master Plan and have the opportunity to come back. Obviously, this was identified as one of your key recommendations coming to our twenty twenty plan was to really start looking at your trail and sidewalk needs within the community. Uh, wanted to make sure that we started providing guidance for expanding the network. Uh, you have a great start here when it look, when you look at, uh, some of your trail segments, whether they're off-street or on-street, uh, or some loops within your parks. But how do we improve that, uh, as part of this, uh, planning process? And really looking for opportunities to guide, you know, future expenditures, uh, for trail and sidewalk and development and improvements within the community. Um, and as you hopefully will, uh, look at here is, uh, unfortunately, the, the item right before this, opportunities to look at grant opportunities and having a plan in place. Uh, we've been fortunate to work with many communities over the years on acquiring, uh, federal and state grant funding for, uh, implementing a lot of these trail recommendations. So having a plan in place, uh, really provides the community a leg up when searching for some of those grant dollars and as part of the, uh, implementation of future trails. The planning process was broken into about five different phases. Uh, we looked at data collection and inventory. We looked at a needs assessment, um, worked with, uh, identifying opportunities and constraints. Uh, we developed some recommendations and then obviously the implementation action plan that's in front of you this evening, uh, for consideration. As part of the overall, uh, process, we did have an opportunity to work with the steering committee. We met with them, uh, twice throughout the process. We received a significant amount of feedback back in twenty as part of your park and open space. So that really built a lot of the foundation for this plan. So it was really, you know, the, the backbone of moving this plan forward, uh, working with their steering committee, working with staff, meeting with them on a bi-weekly basis. We did host a public open house that allowed the community the opportunity to come in and, and voice their opinion on different types of, uh, facilities within the community as part of this planning process. Uh, and again, between that feedback of, of working with their steering committee and staff and the public open house and the feedback that we received back in twenty, uh, twenty twenty, which identified, as you can see on the screen, there was eighty percent of your community back in, uh, twenty twenty wanting to expand the trail system. So again, you had a great foundational base that we could build upon this planning process moving forward. Just kind of a snapshot of your existing system as it is today, you have about three point four six miles of existing trails that are off-street, uh, along with, uh, some about point two nine, uh, trails that are being proposed. You do have some park loops right now, a, a couple of miles of park loops within some of your existing parks and proposed trails coming forward. Um, you're on-street. I, I believe you have one or two streets that are, that are signed right now or have markings for, uh, for bikeways. So hopefully something to, to look at into the future. And, you know, for a community of your size, you have a pretty extensive sidewalk network here, almost, almost fifty miles worth of, uh, of sidewalks already within your community. So that's, uh, kudos to you and the, and the founders of the community, making sure, you know, developments early on, uh, incorporated those sidewalks into the, into the community and residential development. When we start looking at and going through the process of identifying how to, you know, prioritize different trails and, and everything else, we went through a process of looking at different need assessment methods and there's, you know, I won't go through all the specifics, but there's a different levels that we look at, looking at the trip potential analysis and identifying, you know, where people are going, you know, and opportunities for if there were trails in place, you know, what, you know, would people use them? The level of comfort analysis, you know, there is four different types of level of comfort analysis that we can look at. People that are, you know, are, are seasoned professionals that are on, riding some of your major highways on road bikes down all the way to, you wouldn't want to take your children on there. So you're looking at more of kind of those off-street trails. So looking at the, the level of comfort in, and for different types of facilities within, within the, uh, community. We looked at your crash data from twenty sixteen to twenty twenty-one to identify some of those key moments and, and areas where there could be conflicts or concerns with your network. Uh, looking at your regulatory documents, that's one of the foundational basis of implementation of any type of planning process is looking at the regulatory documents that are in place, your zoning code to identify whether or not there's conflicts or if there's barriers there to actually implement in some of these plans. Uh, as, as I mentioned, we went through, you know, working with staff in the, in the open house and the steering committee to identify some major barriers and safety issues, whether those are major, you know, crossings or roadways. Uh, and we also looked at the opportunities, you know, and, um, going through that process as well and where, you know, whether it's within parks, whether it's just, you know, some gaps in the system or longer routes that people are looking for as well. Looking at the overall draft recommendations, we came up with a vision plan or vision statement for this, which is the city of Granbury will be home to a well-connected, accessible and safe trail and bikeaway network that serves the active transportation, public health, economic development and quality of life needs for the community. And I can't re- reiterate enough that this isn't just about trails, you know, within the community, but there's, you know, there's the, there's the recreation benefits that, that Aaron mentioned. There's the active transportation, providing all different modes of types of transportation, whether it's on-street or off-street. But one of the key things too is the economic development side of things and having a strong trail network in your community does promote economic development and developers want to be around communities that are investing in those multimodal options. So having a plan like this and, and, and a guiding, uh, document will hopefully promote some future economic development opportunities within your community. We had a series of recreational goals as well. As you can see on the screen, we had, had identified five overall or overarching goals, one being, you know, connected, your community connectivity and making sure that we kind of fill in the gaps. Accessibility and safety, making sure that we create a safe network for all generations and from equitable distribution, identity, you know, can your trail system be, you know, kind of a unique identity to the city of Granbury and, um, as one of your, you know, potential tourism and everything along those lines. Regional recognition, you know, there are a lot of people that come here, uh, on the weekends and having that opportunity for people to, uh, utilize those facilities is key. And then also looking at your partnerships and funding as well. I think you have some great groups, uh, that, that are within the community now, but also, as I mentioned, you know, having a, an adopted plan does open up a lot more opportunities for state and federal funding, um, for implementation of these different grant programs or grant opportunities. When we looked at your proposed facility typologies, we, we really broke it down into three different types of kind of categories. One of them being your multi-use trails network, which is really an example would be your moments in time. This is where you have, you know, you know, pedestrians and, you know, cyclists on, you know, shared use paths or side paths within the community. Another, uh, facility network type is your on-street bikeways and you can see whether they're, you know, painted bike lanes or bike boulevards, signed routes or wide shoulders. And then your pedestrian network is really more kind of focused on the recreational focus. So that's more identified, uh, of your sidewalks and your park loop trails within your community. So those are the three different types of typologies that we identified through the engagement process, um, for, for the community. We have a series of maps here that, you know, I'll go through kind of, you know, uh, quickly, but this is overall your draft network for your multi-use trails. And again, this is really focusing in both on pedestrian and bicyclists within your community. So just some of the recommendations that we had identified were, you know, side paths being recommended along U S three seventy-seven. You know, one of the, one of the great things that came out of this, the steering committee early on in the process was you have a very strong bicycle organization, bicycle group in the community. And I remember that a lot of them talking about taking these routes outside of town and, and making sure that we have opportunities for some of those, um, more experienced and more seasoned, uh, individuals as well. So looking at, you know, creating those multi-, multi-use trails along some of your major, uh, other highways that come through your community as well. And then also there's some opportunities for rails, trails, uh, connectivity, you know, over by Granbury Middle School was one of the recommendations that came out as well. When we're looking at your on-street bikeways, you know, we're looking at the opportunity to really focus on, you know, residential streets surrounding the downtown and making sure, you know, those connections into the community, long-distance bicycle routes as well, you know, along major thoroughfares. Um, and then again, looking at kind of the connectivity into some of the other residential developments, you know, off of three seventy-seven or on Waters Edge, Harbors Lake and Saratoga. Your pedestrian network, uh, again, remind, reminding people this is really focused on kind of your park loops, but also your sidewalks. This is really about, uh, filling in a lot of those gaps and making safety improvements. Um, we didn't go through a full onslaught of a audit of the sidewalks, but again, there's, there's areas within the community that have obviously broken, you know, sidewalks or narrower sidewalks. So look, focusing on some of those areas, identifying some of the critical gaps, you know, whether they're around schools or major destinations within your community, but also looking at future connections as well as your community, as your community continues to grow. How can you expand that overall network, um, throughout the community? And again, obviously you're looking at new recreation opportunities within some of your existing and future parks that you have planned within your community. So all told, uh, on here, you know, this is kind of an overall recommendations map that's in front of you. Again, really kind of the, you know, focusing on some key connections to your downtown through a variety of ways. Looking at, you know, again, going back to some of the, the, what we heard from the different groups that utilize the facilities in the community, identifying some more of those more longer route or longer established routes, uh, within the area, whether they are on-street or off-street. And then again, really kind of focusing on connectivity gaps, you know, within the system, whether that is sidewalks or trails or bikeways. Looking at the overall prioritization, uh, it was broken down into, into two different types of prioritization. Uh, the first one is focusing on your multi-use trails, you know, prioritization criteria. And this was really developed individually for multi-use trails and on-street bikeway networks to determine implementation timeframes for recommended trail and bikeway corridors. This was a process that we went through with your steering committee. They identified, um, what their priorities were. So these next two slides, we talk about the multi-use trails and then the next slide on here is your on-way bicycle or on-street bikeway prioritization criteria. This one enhances, um, they're both basically the same, but with your on-street, it also does add in the, the level of comfort and then also supports long distance. Those were some additional evaluation criteria that we went through. So we presented these criterias to the steering committee, uh, and staff. They weighted them individually and from there, that's how we prioritized the overall network was based upon the feedback that we received from the steering committee of these different criteria goals. What they prioritize is from a weighted system, uh, to make your overall recommendations. So when we're looking at, um, when we're looking at your multi-use trails, you know, tier one, uh, examples are really your near-term opportunities for your multi-use trails for, so for this example is really identifying, these are the key areas you want to focus on. So again, the map is a little bit small. It's bigger in the, in the document, but again, your tier one is really looking at near-term opportunities to focus on extending the existing network and filling in the gaps. You know, your tier two is, is kind of those, you know, it, you know, your tier one is probably the one to three. You're looking at the tier two to three to five year opportunities, which is really more focusing on connecting some of the edges of the city to, you know, your downtown and the surrounding networks. And tier three opportunities, not only in the multi-use trails, but also within the other, um, you know, priorities for, you know, on-street and, and other network types is really more of your aspirational. These are really more of the, I would say, the five to ten-year ones that you really are looking to plan for and identify as future development occurs and you're reviewing site plans and new neighborhoods. new neighborhoods that are coming into here, how do we prioritize these to make sure that they're taken into consideration or planned for from a funding perspective, from a design perspective, or possibly from a dedication standpoint of developers as well. Your on-street bikeways, again, looking at your your near-term, again, is again focusing back on, you know, segments that are related to some of your surrounding community destinations, those are some more of the the near-term ones, identifying opportunities on the roadways where you have the right away or the space to be able to start doing that. Tier two is really more focusing on those long-distance segments that we talked about, you know, and identifying how we can incorporate those into there. And, you know, your tier three for your on-street bicycle is really the visionary projects, again, this could be major roadway reconstructions, and again, this is, you know, one of the values of having this plan also is this is not just Aaron's plan or the park department plan, this is really, you know, and we'll talk about it aligned with your CIP program, this aligns with your public works department as well to ensure that you have a plan in place that as you're looking at road reconstruction in the future, did we identify different roadway types or roadway facilities, whether it's on-street or on or off-street as well. All of this leads to your, you know, your policy implementation program, and this is really talking about, you know, as as we as we go through, we we dissect all the maps and everything else. We we provide, you know, as part of the planning process as well, the policy implementation program. And this goes beyond just your your physical infrastructure, this goes, this also takes into consideration other items in here that talks about, you know, policies that promote the development of active transportation and recreation facilities. You know, but these are multi-department opportunities, these are things that are focusing on, for example, short-term, you know, looking at updating code of ordinances to include both acceptable and, you know, prohibited uses along trails, you know, that would be something that could be identified within the community, you know, and development department. You look at the opportunities later on, short-term, medium goals of updating your ordinances, there's there's pieces in here as well, working with your public works facilities as well. So we've gone through, as part of the steering committee and staff has reviewed, all of our recommendations from the implementation standpoint have gone through and identified low, medium and high for those different priorities. And we, so we not only identify a level of effort, some of them are, there's a cost that's built into it as well, so we'll identify whether it's a small, medium or large or no cost, but also provide guidance to to the team and and the citizens in the community and leadership about who's the responsible party as well for that implementation program, so this is at the end of your, at the end of the document, but it's always been kind of the roadmap for how do we move this forward, you know, and again, I can't thank Aaron and his team and and the and the citizens that worked with us on this plan moving forward, so I know that was kind of a brief overview for everyone this evening. And I'll ask Kelsey to come up as well if you guys have any specific questions, but again, on behalf of our team, we we thank you for this opportunity to work with you all and making advancements in your active transportation network and recreational opportunities for your community. Any questions?
Mayor.
Ms. Reiner.
I don't necessarily have any questions, I do have a comment, for winging it, you did a really great job. This is an incredibly comprehensive plan and obviously a lot of time and effort has gone into this, so I just, I greatly appreciate this, I think, you know, there's a lot of focus on traffic right now in the next two to five years, we've got some solutions coming down the pipe for 377 and 144. I think that in the long run, coinciding with what's going to be happening with 377 and working to the future to create some connectivity in in the town and outside of the town, I don't think it's going to be just a boon for our tourists, but I think it's going to be great for the folks that actually enjoy walking to work once in a while, so thank you, I really appreciate this, and for all the folks that were on the committees and and a couple of council members here too were on one of those committees, so greatly appreciate it, well done.
We just happen to know who might be working on 377 a little bit, so we had some internal coordination on on some of those things early on in the process, and I thank you for the winging it, luckily I've been I was aware of the plan all the way through the process, but no, it's, we appreciate it, and again, it's, you know, the plan is as as good as, you know, the the leadership that was driving it, you know, Aaron and his staff and the leadership that you guys provide to it, but also the citizens, you have a very strong and dedicated group of individuals that not only worked with us on the park and open space and recreation master plan back in 20, but also on this plan, you have a dedicated group of individuals and we as consultants working with communities, we love to see that, we love to see the champions that are hopefully going to help, you know, because Aaron can't do this and the city leadership can't do this all on their own, there needs to be other champions, and I think through this planning process and the process that we did back in 20, we really identified some of those champions that'll continue to help move this plan forward and again, also, as you mentioned, you do have some, you along with a lot of other communities do have some challenges with transportation and everything else. But these types of guiding documents are huge, you know, when it comes to making sure that you have the correct facilities in place, especially when you have, you know, you know, text dot or, you know, other roads that are, you know, may not be your local roads and everything else and have these in place really provides a vision and and a set vision for your community that people know where you guys are moving into the future, where you want to go, so.
Mayor.
Yeah.
Maybe, Kelsey, I don't know who needs to answer this, but there's a sidewalk illustrated along the railroad and I was, there's an agenda item later here that we have where we're having to lease land from the railroad, I was wondering if you've seen favorable agreements where it's not real expensive to put a sidewalk adjacent to the railroad on the railroad right away and maybe you could point me in those directions where we could benchmark that as we negotiate with Fort Worth Western Railroad.
Yeah, so, sorry, excuse me for my my voice, but we know it is a complicated and costly process coordinating with railroads, so there is a lot of funding out there from text dot, so we are working with Aaron to identify some segments and corridors that might be eligible for funding, I think text dot has over a hundred million dollars out there, so that would be one of the projects that is aspirational and we do consider that there's a lot of coordination and it just comes with the territory, but funding grant opportunities would be the way to support those kinds of projects.
Thank you. Hope you get the phone better.
Unfortunately, being a previous city planner, I unfortunately know the challenges that you guys are going through with the the railroads, it took me three years to get a tunnel for, you know, adjacent to a railroad that it was never even going to affect it, so it's best of luck in on that one, but again, we're certainly here to help on on those things, we can certainly try to find, you know, supporting documentation, you know, of other communities that have gone through different challenges, you know, from a negotiation standpoint, we can provide that support to Aaron.
And so my understanding that this documentation will be, can be used to apply for various grants that are currently coming available?
That is, that is correct.
Just as an FYI, I was in a text 21 text dot meeting just last week and your firm is very much appreciated by text dot, so use that to your advantage, please, and to our advantage.
Well, we appreciate the, we appreciate that comment. We've been very fortunate, I mean, within probably the last 10 years, we've probably have helped communities with over thirty-five to fifty million dollars worth of grants for extending.
That's about what we need.
We're extending, you know, trails and, you know, and everything else, and we have, you know, we made a strong effort over the last year to bolster, Kendall Howard had, for the longest time was doing a lot of our grant applications and over the last year we've added almost eight to 10 people supporting our grant administration and grant group to actually really help communities be able to strive to get some of those additional funding dollars that are out there, because there's some opportunities right now, so it's definitely, you know, if we have the opportunity and chance to to try to go for those.
Yeah, we need them and we certainly will, you know, don't let us hold you back, we will help however we however we can, however we should. Council, more questions? Okay. So do I hear a motion? Adopting ordinance number 2264, approving the Granbury Active Transportation and Recreation Plan?
So moved.
Mr. Wiley moves, here's a second.
Second.
Ms. Reiner seconds, all in favor say aye, aye, all opposed say nay. I hear no nays, it is approved, six and oh. Thank you, Aaron, thank you guys for doing this, just great work, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
During a late meeting.
Beautiful plan.
Thank you for waiting for a late part of the meeting.
Oh, no, no worries, you guys have a happy holidays, thank you very much again for continuing to support us.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to 7.9, which will be a public hearing. Call in just a minute, we're going to consider adopting ordinance number 22-65, approving the request of Brian and Nancy Ronberg to rezone a point four-three acre tract lot PT block eighty-seven of the Barton addition from residential twelve thousand R12 and light commercial to residential twelve thousand R12. Property is located at 701 Lippin Highway.
I'm going to try to speed this up, Kara, for the for the moment, if y'all have questions, we'll have Kara chime in on this, but basically these folks have a piece of property that's multi-zoned and they're trying to zone it all the same at this point to make it all uniform, be zoned residential twelve thousand. Pretty simple, meets our comp plan. Any questions?
Chris, or Mayor?
Mr. Rodriguez.
Chris, what I got out of this is just the person wants to make it residential, since it's both residential R12 and light commercial, so he just wants it residential, is that correct?
That's correct, he doesn't want the split zoning.
Okay.
Housekeeping item, really.
Yes, yes. I make a motion, Mayor, that we approve this ordinance as stated, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
We'll open the public meeting, is there anyone that wants to speak on this item? I see no one raising their hand, so I'll close the public meeting. And, Mr. Rodriguez, would you like to make a motion?
All right, now, now I'll make that motion, Mayor, I make a motion to approve the change of zoning as stated.
7.9, here's a second.
Second.
Okay, we're making a motion to approve the reading as stated in 7.9, adopting ordinance 22.65, I'll not read all that. All in favor say aye, aye, all opposed say nay. I hear no nays, it is passed, six and oh. 7.1 is also a public hearing. Consider adopting ordinance number 2266, approving the request of Four Shelby Inc. for a specific use permit to allow short-term rental residential unhosted in a residential eighty-four hundred zoning district, this property is addressed as 511 North Travis Street.
I'll turn this over to you, Kara, for briefing.
Brief presentation, so this property is shown here on the the plan, they're residential zone, single family, they desire to place a short-term residential unhosted use for two bedrooms, they have adequate parking. They're surrounded by residential uses, there are a few nearby short-term rentals, it's shown on that map. Their plan shows the location of the parking and the the structure is on the property. They've submitted their floor plan as well as their evacuation plan. And we did publish notice and send notification letters, we received one in opposition and three in favor of the proposal. Just display on your screen here, the commission recommended approval unanimous six oh with certain conditions as contained in your report from the staff. And the staff recommendation is consistent with that recommendation for approval, these are your voting options for this SUP.
Thank you, Kara. If y'all have any questions.
Staff.
Maybe a public hearing?
We will open a public hearing now, does anyone want to speak on this item, number 7.10? I see no one raise their hand, so we will close the public hearing. Is there discussion on this, council have questions about this item? Say there were three who were in favor of passing this and one neighbor that said no, the neighbor give a reason of, don't have it here. Do you know if the neighbor, the one person that was opposed, what was the rationale?
Mayor, just opposed. I did notice that three of those for for this STR is the same person with different companies. Three different companies, yeah, with different addresses, so it's the same person that owns several residential lots in that area, so just wanted to point that out for the other council people.
And each lot gets to count as a vote on the tally as when you're doing your percentages, but it is one.
Other comments? We can close the public hearing? Any other comments? Do I hear a motion on 7.10?
We make a motion to approve as presented.
Mr. Corrigan makes the motion, consider adopting ordinance number 22.6, or to adopt ordinance number 22.6, approving the request of Four Shelby for a specific use permit to lay a short-term residential and the property at 511 North Travis Street, here's a second to that.
Second.
Ms. Reiner, seconds, all in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. I hear no nays, it is approved, six and oh. 7.11 is also a public hearing, consider adopting ordinance number 2267, approving the request of Tom Rather for a specific use permit to allow short-term residential unhosted resident residential eighty-four hundred zoning district, property is addressed as 505 East Grove Street.
Again, I'll turn it over to Ms. Wowie.
Sure, a brief presentation, so this is an existing single-family residential property, proposed for a three-bedroom, short-term rental. Parking is adequate on the site, it's surrounded by residential zoning and uses. This map shows nearby short-term rentals, although none within that shaded area, which is six hundred feet, they're a little further distant. This shows the site improved with the existing house and the parking that's adequate for the proposed use. They've submitted a floor plan as well as evacuation plan, and these are just pictures. We sent public notice as well as published in the newspaper. We received six letters in favor and two letters in opposition to the request. The staff recommends approval with the following conditions. Our plan commission also recommended approval of the project with with the same conditions. These are your voting options on your screen, thank you, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I'll open the public, do you have a question, Mr. Rodriguez? Okay. I'm going to open the public hearing, does anyone want to speak on this item? I see no hands, so we'll close the public hearing. Do we have discussion on 7.1, adopting this resolution 2267? Mr. Rodriguez.
Kara, the width of a parking lot for one car, what what is that?
For one car, it's nine feet in width.
So putting three on this, twenty-seven feet, that one's just barely two feet over, right, so that's, we're good on that, right?
That's adequate.
Okay. All right, it just looked like a two-car
Understood.
driveway, so I just wanted to make sure that that was addressed.
Mayor.
Ms. Reiner.
I was just looking at one of the opposition letters and traffic, I know we've addressed this in the past, I don't know what the traffic situation is in that area. I know we suggested doing a traffic study, I don't know if that's feasible for this, but I also wanted to, I just want to, I want people to understand that we actually do look at these, because this is an ongoing issue with the short-term rentals, but security issues and noise ordinance, or noise, risk of noise is one of the other ones. We actually do have a noise ordinance, so unless, you know, they're violating a noise ordinance, that wouldn't be an issue. But I did, I wanted to address, there's only one in here that has an explanation of why they're opposing, so I kind of wanted to address those.
Thank you. Other comments, questions?
No, I just wanted to add on to what Trish has said, so I've I've looked at some of the STRs and most of the STRs and other, what other towns are dealing with is noise, like you were saying, is parties going on. I think we're doing a great job here in Granbury monitoring that. And also, I I don't, it's it's noise, parties, and that's that's most of the And also, I I don't, it's it's noise, parties, and that's that's most of the time what other cities are seeing when their STRs, at their STR, so I just wanted to bring that as well, so.
Mr. Kaufman?
So I'd just like to add on to what Eddie's saying is we appreciate the fact that if someone's having a noise problem, that they call the non-emergency police number and let the police know so that it can be properly documented and dealt with. If we receive a call that there's a a noise problem in a neighborhood based on this, we use that information whenever we review the short-term renewals in the future. And without those complaints being filed, we're not going to have adequate information to make good decisions moving forward. So it's very important for the neighbors to help us, help them have a nice, quiet, safe neighborhood. So, you know, I was talking to, I was in a meeting with the county judge and a citizen that lives in the county, and they asked me to come because they were having short-term rentals next door to them. They live on the lake. The house next door is probably a million-dollar home. It's been turned into a short-term rental, and there's excessive noise and partying going on out in the county, and there's nothing that can be done other than a civil suit or something like that. We have rules inside the city limits that allow us to regulate noise limits and unruly behavior like littering up the neighbor's yard if you can catch them. So those kind of things are problems in some places with STRs and other places they're not. We don't experience those problems or we're not aware of them, but we're certainly all ears and we encourage the public to let us know, so.
Mr. Mayor? Yeah, just one other thing on that, that, I mean, there are tenants in the SUP, obviously, and we always ask those questions, you know, as a policeman called, are any violations? And those all get taken into account, you know, as we take a look at whether or not we're going to renew the SUP or not.
No other conversation? I've already closed the public hearing on this. Do I hear a motion on seven point one one?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Vale?
Approve adopting ordinance twenty-two sixty-seven.
As stated on the paper here?
As stated.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Ms. Reiner, second. All in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. I hear no nays, it is approved six and oh. We move to seven point one two. Consider approving a rail crossing license agreement between the Fort Worth and Western Railroad Company and the city of Granbury at or near mile post thirty-nine point nine six and mile post thirty-seven point three eight for a twenty-year period in the amount of fifty thousand dollars and adopt ordinance number twenty-two dash six-eight amending the operating budget for the general fund for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Mr. Kaufman?
Yeah, how about that for a rattlesnake bite? We received a a letter from the railroad stating that our agreement that was executed twenty years and seven months had lapsed, and we knew nothing about it. All the institutional knowledge of that information had gone away except for our long-term employer in McLean, which was involved in the reconstruction and repairs of some various things that had to be done in order for that agreement to be executed twenty years ago. We had no idea. It was a five thousand dollar lease agreement that we used that that got us to the point where we are today. What we have is two crossings of the railroad that go underneath the trestle in two different locations for our moments in time trail. And like I said, when it was executed twenty years ago, it was five thousand dollars. We had to do some other improvements to facilitate that, so that could discount the costs that happened. And now they're telling us it's going to cost fifty thousand dollars for the next twenty years. So that's twenty-five hundred dollars a year, twelve hundred and fifty dollars a crossing per year over the next twenty years. And so as a side note, we've been working on some software that will help us track all these type of agreements for the next generation, and we hope to have that implemented soon. But until we get, you know, again, we would have to find this one to know that it existed. So it really did come out of the the woodwork, so to speak, and so that's why we're asking to authorize us to execute this agreement so that we don't have to terminate our our trail system at the railroad track. We can continue on and have it connected and and also to amend the budget to fund it. So any questions? I've got Erin here. We talk about anything to do with the past, looking at the future, whatever we can do for you.
Mayor?
Ms. Reiner?
What's the timeline on that temporary gap agreement?
I'll let Erin address that. I'll turn that completely over to Erin and Michael.
So the the gap agreement we're working on right now is actually an extension of the first gap agreement, and it expires tomorrow.
Okay. Are there other questions?
Probably not a lot of time to apply for a grant between now and tomorrow morning, then, right?
Mr. Wildley?
I thought Trish was asking this. What was the period of time that the five thousand dollars covered?
Twenty-year. It was a twenty.
He's talking about the.
The original?
Yeah, the original was a twenty-year agreement signed in July, July of two thousand two. And then it expired, and then we were notified, and then we had to initiate a gap agreement to protect the railroad. And then while we were, while they were working on a new twenty-year lease, they have sent that to us. And then that temporary gap agreement ran out, and they were only willing to renew it until tomorrow, knowing we had a council meeting, hopefully to get this new lease approved tonight. And that's where we're at. The gap agreement, yeah, it it cost us eighteen hundred dollars for that temporary gap agreement.
And is this at all a negotiable thing or the railroad says fifty grand or don't use your sidewalk?
Yes, that's, yes. If if we if we didn't approve it, we would have, so we would have a trail that started at the airport and terminated at the soccer field or the skate park. Then we would have a nice ten-foot wide section of sidewalk that ran from the ballfields to the dog park at six hundred West Moore. And then we would have another trail that ran from Memorial Lane to Hewlett Park. So we would have three separate trails all, you know, that kind of terminated at each end. It would not be a through system.
Ms. Reiner?
This might be for Chris too. Did, I I know that the letter stated that it was non-negotiable. Did we try to negotiate?
I asked if, I asked if the eighteen hundred dollars could be applied to this amount, and they said no. That's the extent of the negotiation that I that I tried.
Any explanation as to why the enormous increase other than obvious inflation?
No, but the, so we have a option to renew at the end of this twenty-year period, but it does state that the fee would most likely increase at the end of this next twenty years also.
Erin, haven't, didn't you indicate earlier in your past, twenty years ago, wasn't there also some construction associated with the lease?
There was.
That we paid for?
Yeah, the the construction plans of the hiking bike trail were included in that lease agreement that we had to build the trail to those specs. And a lot of that was, it was through a grant, all of that was through a grant, so it was pretty pretty stringent, the specs. The city itself went in and made some improvements to the drainage, which benefited the the trestles. And there was a an old bridge frame for the railroad that was parallel to one of the existing bridges in use today. And the city took that out for the railroad. So I'm I'm assuming that that had some play in the in the price that the the lease was for at that point.
Other questions?
Just so you know, we have other lease agreements with the railroad as well for pipeline crossings, things like that, that we have to pay for. And, you know, buried pipelines, there's no free ride crossing the railroad right away, and they have superior authority over everybody, so it's it's a mess, so. Just just beware, there's probably fifteen utility crossings throughout the city that we have to deal with, but they're much smaller in value, so this was a shock to us. We didn't know anything about it.
I I didn't try to negotiate the price down, but, you know, I think the fact that they're not willing to even apply the eighteen hundred dollars kind of reflects what the answer would be.
I appreciate that. I'm always of the mind, you don't know if you don't ask, so I would ask.
Sure.
Other comments, questions?
They did send a nice commemorative plate to the city for their annual Christmas awareness of who they are, so that was really nice.
It's fifty thousand dollar plate right now. Other comments, questions? Do I hear a a motion on seven point one two? Mr. Corgan?
Make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty-two dash sixty-eight as stated.
As stated. Do I hear a second?
I will reluctantly second it.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
And the agreement, yes.
Agreement and the ordinance amending.
Okay. The agreement and the ordinance, all of the above.
Can I second that?
So, City Secretary, we are approving seven point one, or we are making the motion on seven point one two as written to approve the railroad crossing license agreement and amend the operating budget to the general fund for twenty twenty-two. Okay? So that is the motion to second it. All in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. I hear only ayes, no nays, it is approved six and oh. Sure, somebody's mind was speaking, no. Seven point one three, consider adopting ordinance number twenty-two dash sixty-nine to dissolve the Public Television Channel Advisory Board.
So I'm going to turn this over to our communication manager, Jeff Newferk. This is, some changes have occurred with our public television channel, and we no no longer think we need this advisory board, but he'll present this to you, so go ahead, Jeff.
I'm going to enjoy the opportunity to bring you something that will save the city money. That's, not to disrespect any of my coworkers, but I think I've got the lead on that tonight. Right now, the advisory board meets four times a year. That was reduced recently from twelve times a year. What we've found is the cost of creating an agenda, of having meetings, posting meetings, having meetings, minutes, having someone transcribe the minutes, and then repeating that process another three times every year doesn't accomplish what the board was originally set up to do. The board was set up to receive feedback on behalf of the city and to make programming suggestions for the what is now Spectrum Channel one ninety on on television. And so technology has changed over the years, the staff level at the city has changed. The expertise of the staff has evolved to a more video-centric level, and so staff would like to recommend that we dissolve this board. We still have agreements with all of the volunteers. We've had this discussion with each of them individually and as a group. They will continue to serve. They were invited already. Would you please help us in January for the Goosebump Jump Video Project? We appreciated their help for the runway dedication, for the police department building dedication, for the July Fourth Parade. They will still continue in place. Volunteerism is still alive and well in public television here in Granbury. We just won't have four meetings a year to have the official gathering of that group.
You know, I'd like to add to what Jeff's saying. Many of y'all know that for a long time, maybe as long as a decade, the city had a program where Mr. Uker actually sold advertisement for sponsor sponsorship, sponsorship, and then he and Kevin Myers videoed football games and athletic events. That has since moved back to the high school as a journalism program, and Mr. Uker is now working for them again, so we have no need for that administrative oversight for that, what happens with that program. So that was a big chunk of what this board was doing, was raising funds to pay for the sports advertising, staffing, the the videoing and the and the, okay, calling the colors of the football game with Mr. Uker's outstanding radio voice. And so we we're evolving back to the way we should be, where it's just government stuff, not school stuff, not booster club stuff, and that that eliminates the need for the television channel. We we're happy to answer any questions, but we have about thirteen advisory boards, so this would reduce that responsibility by one, and we certainly could free y'all up on those appointments when that comes around, so. Any questions?
No questions to, have any discussion, no discussion? Do I have a motion to to consider dissolving the Public Television Channel Advisory Board?
So moved.
Mr. Wildly moves.
Second.
Second by Ms. Reiner. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. I hear no nays, it's approved six and oh. Before we move to seven point one four, which is consider selecting a pro temp from among the five council persons, I would like for City Attorney Sorrell here to give us the rules on how we select the nominee.
Well, Mayor, I think it's been determined the policy of the council would be for you to open nominations. You can nominate from amongst yourselves and then close the nominations and and vote for each person nominated. Everyone gets one vote, and whoever has the most votes is the pro temp.
Okay. We're all clear on that? Do I hear any nominations for pro temp? Mr. Rodriguez?
Mayor, I'd like to nominate myself as one of the candidates.
Mr. Rodriguez is nominated?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Wildly?
I'd like to nominate Trish Reiner if she wants to continue doing it.
Are you willing? Okay. Ms. Reiner's willing to serve if so elected. Do I hear more nominations? I hear no more nominations, then we will all, so do we have to do this just by raising hands or, okay, we'll raise raise hands, everything, okay? Okay, all in favor of Mr. Rodriguez? Okay. I have two. All in favor of Ms. Reiner? I have six, I have four. So, Ms. Reiner, you will serve as our pro temp for twenty twenty-three? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez, for putting yourself out there. I appreciate it. Seven point one five, to sermon and consider adopting the city rules of procedure, or the county, the city council rules of procedure and council rules of procedure. Pass those down, take one, pass one? Okay. This is one time a year that we get to by charter, look at our rules and procedures and to make any changes that we might want. I had three considerations, and I'd like these to be looked at as, one is process, one is format, and one is procedure. So they could either be three, I think probably three motions, and see if they can be approved. I'll cover the first one. The current is the two point six, where it says the city manager, acting city manager, city manager's designation will attend all meetings of the council unless excused by the presiding officer, and she'll sit at the dais. City manager may make recommendations to the council and shall have the right to take part in all discussions of the council, but she'll have no vote. That's the current. My change on that would be that they may, that the city manager may sit at the dais instead of shall sit at the dais. And my rationale is that we tie our hands by shall. It's a must versus a may, when it may have been more appropriate today that somebody else sit somewhere else instead of at the dais. See no change in all the rules, I mean, the rules that we we vote on who sits where, but just had a verbiage change there. Mr. Rodriguez?
Who makes the determination whether he sits at the dais or not?
We did when we changed the rules and procedures last year en masse. That was one of the changes.
So it's not just one person?
No, we all we all voted on it. We we approved the rules and procedures when, at the last election, and this was one of the changes. There were a number. We, in fact, we had a special meeting. We had a special meeting and went through this. Yes, sir.
I think I understand your question, Eddie. I believe councilperson Rodriguez's question is, is if you change shall to may, at whose discretion is it that the city manager may sit at the dais? Is it the council as a whole, or the presiding officer, whoever that may be, at any given meeting? Or even the city manager says, I don't want to sit at the dais. You know, like, who's going to make that decision? Is it the city manager? Is it the council? Is it the mayor? Who makes that decision?
My belief is that we were pretty clear on that last time, in that it is the council that would make that decision. But if it's shall, then we would, what, suspend the rules? And we could.
You would have to.
We would have to suspend the rules. It's a may, it's a discussion, boom, boom, vote yes, no. Chris, our council may find it more advantageous to sit over here for whatever, you know, whatever the presentation. They could make their request. We could say yes or no. Unless it's shall, and then I guess, again, there's a way to get there, you just have to suspend the rules.
Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Are we talking on a case-by-case basis every meeting, then?
No, no, no.
Or at the beginning of the year?
No. No. It's just the rules, may. If some reason came up that said it would be more advantageous for one of these folks to sit in a different environment, then let them sit in a different environment with our approval. Versus, no, you have to shall. It's the verb, it's shall versus may.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I guess my question is, what is the intent? And do you see, as you put this forward to us, do you see a scenario or situation that it would be more appropriate for either the city manager or our city attorney not to sit at the dais?
No, not really. But I don't, but at the same time, why should I tie mine and the council's hands and these individuals? Shall is used in our rules and procedures 103 times. And if you start looking at the rules and procedures, it is, you shall do this, and you do not have an option. You shall do this, and you do not really have an option throughout the rules and procedures. It appears to me that we tie our hands on this one for no reason.
Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I believe we actually had this discussion when we had our workshop on this very issue, on whether they should or should not sit up here. I actually personally find it beneficial, particularly for our city attorney, if we need advisement immediately. If he's sitting in the back of the room, it's a little, takes a little longer. We're already, we have, like this evening, we already have a very long meeting. If we have a long meeting, it's a little bit easier to grab their attention while they're sitting up here. And as far as I know, I've heard no complaints from either the city manager or the city attorney, current city manager and current city attorney, that they don't care to be up here. And I understand the tying of the hands, but I think it's beneficial to all of us. And if there's a presentation, I know in the past, Chris has just gone down to the podium during the meeting without, you know, any incident. So I don't know that there's...
Look, there is no one that has benefited more from having them sitting next to me than me.
Yeah.
You know, I recognize that. I would, I am recommending changing the word. It does not seem to be getting a lot of support, so I'm going to go ahead and make the motion that 2.6 and 2.7 of our rules and procedures be changed as identified on the document here. Shall have the right to sit at the dais to may. Do I hear a second? I hear no second, so we'll discontinue the discussion on that. Second one I have is for, and like I said, we do this only once a year, is for format. The current is city council members, during city council meetings, city council members shall assist in preserving orders and decorum and shall not by engaging in conversation amongst themselves or the public or otherwise cause delay or interrupt the proceedings or refuse to obey the rules of the city council. Again, we have the word shall, but my desire there is to change that to 14-point font and to bold it. I think it's one of the key things that we do with our, with the citizens out here, is that we pay attention, we listen to them, and I would just say, let's just highlight, highlight that part. Mr. Rodriguez?
I think, you know, after sitting on this for a while, I think anybody that sits up here, that should apply to. Anybody that's sitting on this dais, shall preserve order and decorum and shall not engage in conversation amongst themselves or the public, because it's just, it's just addressing the city council.
Yeah, the only thing I would say is that I would like to just emphasize that and have it emphasized in our rules and procedures. Anyone that picks it up says, that must be pretty important.
Yeah, I don't see...
Not to say that none of it is important, but...
Yeah, I don't see, I don't see why it should, yeah.
Mr. Wildley.
This might be just a me thing, but when I see, like, larger and bold, it's like it's yelling at me. I don't, I guess I don't see the...
I wouldn't, I wouldn't ask that you take this personally.
I don't need the document yelling at me, but that's just my opinion.
No, this is, look, if there's anybody up here that's guilty, I was just guilty talking to council over here. It's on a, you know, it's on a matter of, it's a public matter, and it's a public forum, you know, so they probably should have been able to hear what we were saying at that point in time as well. But, no, it's not, this is not for anyone. I just personally believe that we have an obligation to these people out here, right here, to be looking them in the eye every day. And I would emphasize that through this bolding and increasing the font. I can see there's a lot of enthusiasm for that today, so...
Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Reiner.
Just to make a comment, I just, I feel like all of our rules and procedures are equally important, so I'm not sure that anybody looking at this document would need to know that this is any more important than anything else that we adhere to. So, I mean, it's, it looks pretty, but I don't know that. I mean, we don't regularly look over our own rules and procedures. I know folks in the audience or folks online do, but, you know, we should know them by now. We've been doing this for a while, so...
Council just indicated that he likes to be yelled at, so...
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just think that, you know, when I read a document and it's somewhat bolded on there, or italicized or something, obviously, they, you know, the author wants the reader to make sure that they're paying attention to that. And sometimes, sometimes documents are written that way, or notices are written that way, if it's perceived that people aren't adhering to it. And I would concur with Mr. Rodriguez. I think that, you know, we have a very professional council, and, you know, I think we're very respectful of the people that enter this chamber and come to speak, and that, you know, we pay attention, we do our homework, and I think, you know, the council does a good job at that.
Very good. So I'm going to go ahead and, in interest of time, and make a motion that we approve this change to the rules and procedures by bolding 3.1 and putting it in 14 font. Do I hear a second?
I don't see, I'll second it.
Mr. Rodriguez seconds it. All in favor say aye, or raise your hand. That's two. All opposed? And I would like to use a word different from opposed, all saying not today, except them. Okay. Number 7.13, parliamentary procedure. It says, when not specifically addressed by these rules and procedures, the presiding officer shall, to the best of his or her ability, adhere to the parliamentary procedure. And I say, the parliamentary procedure as defined by Robert's Rules of Order Newly Revised, 12th Edition, 2020. And my rationale on that is adhere to the parliamentary procedure. Is that Greg's? Eddie's? Mr. Wildley's? Steve's? You know, that's, it says nothing. So we need a, you know, whether it's Robert's Rules or, you know, Mr. Reiner, or Ms. Reiner's Rules, we need something there instead of just parliamentary procedure.
Mayor.
Yes.
I agree. When I read that the first time, I had no idea what the parliamentary procedures were. So having a reference document inside of this gives somebody to go look at how to conduct, but that's just my opinion.
Mr. Wildley.
I actually like this because I agree with what Eddie just said. However, in the various conferences we've been to, I've been to several Robert's Rules of Procedures, Robert's Rules of Orders conference, or meetings, there's several things that we don't do that really follow that.
Should we?
Some of the order that we go through our discussion. And, you know, one of them said, you're actually supposed to have a motion and second the motion before you have any discussion. And we've all agreed, we like to have the discussion first, so mainly so the audience can know what we're thinking before we, you know, make a motion. Anyway, I don't have a problem with this being in there unless it's going to totally change the way we do things up here, the way that we've all been comfortable doing it for all these years.
I believe you find in Robert's Rules that there is the, as we determine by who sits at the dais, there is a, what do you call it, custom and practices and customs, customary practices that we agree upon. We agree on that. So I, no, I wouldn't see it changing, you know, hopefully it doesn't get used that much in terms of being, having to be used. Yes, sir.
Well, and as Eddie said, and I agree with this, the phrase parliamentary procedure doesn't really mean anything, so as such, I'll make a motion that we include Robert's Rules as part of this, as you've written it.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
All in favor say aye. So we will change the rules and procedures on 7.13 to parliamentary procedure as defined by Robert's Rules of Orders Newly Revised, 12th Edition, 2020, which I think is important.
FYI, I'll order you all a copy.
Oh, no, don't.
It's a little...
Now then, there, now, that was, that was me. Each of you, do you have other additions, changes? We did have. I think Mr. Wildley said it last, when we had the special workshop meeting on that, lasted about two and a half, three hours. That was good. It was very good. So this is just a couple of the things that I picked up over the last year. Okay. So do we have anything that we need to do in... Oh, we have number... Do we have any? Okay. Okay. So 7.15, determine and consider adopting the city council rules of procedure. I make a motion that we adopt the city council rules of procedure as amended by item 7.13, where we add to the end parliamentary procedures as defined by Robert's Rules of Orders Newly Revised, 12th Edition. All in favor?
I'll second.
Mr. Rodriguez, second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Rules have been adopted as amended, 6-0. It's approved by 6-0. Okay. Do we have any sheets of citizens wanting to speak? So number eight, we have notices and comments on the agenda. We have need for executive session.
Sorry, yes.
No, those are good. I now declare that the Granbury City Council is convened into open session, that all members present in the city council go into closed session pursuant to the provisions of Texas Government Code, in accordance with the authority contained in the following sections, 551-701, consultation with attorney pending or contemplated litigation, 551072, deliberation regarding real property, and 551087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. So we are in executive session. Now declared that the Granbury City Council reconvenes into open session. There was no action taken in closed session, and all council members are present. There being no further business, I announce the meeting adjourned.